I think so.
It's everywhere.
Wow, I think that's even, yeah.
Yeah, mine too.
Okay. We can get this party started here. I will call to order the study session. And we will begin with item number one, which consists of three items. GP 2504, Headwaters Gilbert and Z 2509 and DR 2576, all Headwaters Gilbert. And I think Sal will come up to present.
You do.
Here it goes.
Good evening, Commissioners. The project we'll be taking a look at first is Headwaters Gilbert. Before we jump into some of the documentation, I just wanted to provide a general overview of the associated applications for the project. So with Headwaters, we'll be taking a look at a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from general commercial to residential to 25 to 50 dwelling units per acre. It'll also consist of a PAD amendment to remove the subject site from the existing Gilbert Town Square PAD. And part of that PAD amendment, the applicant is also requesting a rezone of the 6.37 acres from Shopping Center to multifamily high with a PAD. And following that, we'll be looking at a design review for a four-story age-restricted multifamily development, which would encompass an administrative use permit for a parking reduction. The subject site outlined in blue, as I mentioned, is roughly 6.37 acres and is currently located within the Gilbert Town Square planned area development. It's currently situated just west of Gilbert Road and just south of Warner Road. The subject site is adjacent to existing multifamily just to the west. We have commercial to the south and the east. And to the immediate north, we have the Consolidated Canal, which is a PFI zoning district. And just beyond that, we have some single-family residential. As I previously mentioned, the applicant is proposing a PAD amendment to remove themselves from the existing PAD to establish a PAD specific to the Headwaters project. As part of the amendment, the applicant is requesting the rezone from Shopping Center to MFH for a 188-unit multifamily development. I provided the zoning exhibit here just to provide some context to the adjacent properties. We have Shopping Center to the south and east, multifamily medium to the west, PFI immediately to the north, and just beyond that, SF6 and SF7. As part of that PAD process, there are a few proposed deviations associated. The first one is a reduction in the landscape setback in the northeast corner from 10 feet to zero feet. And this is due to the existing property line and its location in the center of a drive aisle. And implementing a landscape setback would impede in that drive. The second deviation associated with the application is the reduction in covered parking and enclosed parking onsite. Our LDC currently reads that one covered parking space per dwelling unit is required with at least 25% of those spaces being enclosed. And the applicant is requesting to amend this language to have a total of 0.8 covered parking spaces per dwelling unit with a 21.3% enclosed ratio. With the associated zoning application, we do have a general plan amendment. The existing GP designation onsite on the general commercial and the proposed residential 25 to 50 dwelling units per acre. The proposed multifamily development is designed to achieve a residential density of roughly 29.5 dwelling units per acre, which falls within that threshold. Looking at the site plan itself, there are two primary residential buildings. Those will be Building A and Building B. And each of those will be four stories in height and located closer to that eastern property line to present a nice street front. Building A is approximately 69,355 square feet. And Building B is anticipated to be just over 117,000 square feet. Just between these buildings centrally located is a 6,025-foot clubhouse. Outside of the clubhouse, there are a variety of amenities just to the northeast there, which would include some pickleball courts, a swimming pool, a dog park, and some additional amenities in the clubhouse itself. To enhance pedestrian movement, there are plentiful walkways and sidewalks that have been integrated into the site for onsite connection as well as to the canal paths just to the north. As for the parking spaces themselves, they have been distributed along the perimeter of the site as well as adjacent to the residential buildings themselves. Additionally, I wanted to add that previous approvals also have parking for the subject site. And what I mean by that is, a while back, the site of what is now Cold Beer and Cheeseburgers in the site for Buffalo Wild Wings did not have enough space to satisfy their parking requirement, and at the time were built across the street. So the applicant is providing those additional 23 spaces for those commercial users so they're able to meet their parking count while also meeting the demand for the parking for the multifamily development. Oh, whoa, spider. Taking a look at the landscape plan, I wanted to mention that one of the main reasons why they are requesting removal from the existing PAD is due to some strict landscaping requirements that are tied to the ordinance, which would be ordinance 617. One of these standards is specifically to multifamily developments and the requirement to provide a minimum of two trees per dwelling unit excluding street trees and perimeter landscaping, which would include an additional 362 species onsite or trees planted, which would become difficult for even keeping the species alive. And one thing we noticed too is that the Gilbert Town Center does have quite a bit of landscaping, so staff wants to ensure that the same presence of landscaping is presented onsite. The landscaping plan has a tree palette of Desert Museum Palo Verde, Red Push Pistach and Evergreen Elm, with the district tree being the Mexican Pham Palm, which is provided. And I just wanted to add that the landscaping buffer just to the south does not look like it's meeting that 10-foot requirement, so we're still working with the applicant to ensure that all of the additional standards are provided onsite. Moving over to the elevations. The Headwaters project incorporates a predominantly stucco walled system, supported by accent materials of stone veneer, composite deckboard, and metal trim. The selected palette has a total of nine colors intended to complement the building's massing and material transitions. Some of these colors include the light brown composite deckboard, white French toast, balanced beige and Turkish coffee for the stucco, dark maroon and light tan for the stone veneer, and white for the metal accents. The use of the darker tones at the base and the lighter tones above contributes to a balanced transition. The roof line varies along these longer wall planes, and the utilization of recessed walls and bump outs also help accent these large massing. Another thing to add is that the balconies are all screened to that 80% requirement and all maintain a minimum of 60 square foot of private open space. And I'll just go ahead and go through these here for you. And the key at the bottom helps provide a bit better depiction of where these angles are coming from. And then the last piece here is just the elevations for the associated clubhouse. We can see shared colors, materials, as well as those enclosed parking units as well. So at this time, staff is requesting input from the planning commission in regards to the removal from the existing PAD, the rezoning from Shopping Center to multifamily high, and just general comments in regards to the site design and the elevations. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to field any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Could you bring up the last slide just so that, okay, just so that then as anyone's thinking through it, they know what you're looking for? Okay, who wants to kick it off?
I have a question.
Go ahead, yeah.
I have a question for Sal, Chair, if that's all right.
Yes, please.
Okay. Sal, on the removal from the existing PAD, I was curious what the boundary of that existing PAD is. It looks like it's the Gilbert Town Square. And why they're removing it versus modifying it? And if there's any kind of design guidelines or anything for that town square that this is removing it from, I guess I'm trying to understand why we're removing it from the PAD.
Chair Mont, Commissioner Davis. So one of the, so let me back up a little bit. So as regards to design guidelines for the Town Center, Gilbert Town Square PAD, that original ordinance 617 adopted associated design guidelines, which now, which means every following development needs to come in alignment with the conditions of the ordinance as well as any associated design guidelines. The design guidelines do have stricter landscape development standards than what we see in the land development code today. And the applicant has shown a count that is in alignment with our current code, and these additional standards create more of a burden rather than allowing for the development.
Thank you. As far as landscaping, I understand that. As far as like building design, is there any kind of standards that they're not having to meet because they're pulling out of that PAD, or are they still having to?
Chair, Commissioner Davis, so although they are requesting the removal from the PAD, planning staff is still ensuring that the architecture, landscaping, and the overall design is complementary to what exists in the Town Square PAD. And that's where you see some of those shared colors, materials, shared landscaping species. So while they are removing themselves or requesting to remove themselves, we want to ensure that it plays into the existing environment.
Okay. Okay. Do you want me to just go in with all of my?
Go for it.
So I guess, as far as the, has there been, I assume they're working on their neighborhood process. Is there any anticipation that the neighborhood to the west is going to have issues with any of this? Do you know?
At this time, I haven't heard any feedback from actually any of the neighbors associated with the surrounding neighborhood, so at this time, there hasn't been any neighborhood outreach to the planning department.
I know a couple of people that I know weren't happy with the one next to it, so I don't know if that'll stir up at all. Because I was, I just, I guess I'm curious if there's grade changes or anything, or lighting, or any issues like that that could be a problem with that neighborhood to the west. It is going to be a pretty significant wall of apartments that's going to go in across there. So because it's, you know, one long building. So I guess as far as the, let me kind of go through your list here. For overall site design, I was, it looks like they have that large retention area that's back in behind the garages along the canal, that's hidden by the garages, which is unfortunate. I know it's retention and probably not that usable, but it's going to be not visible or even close to usable when it's hidden like that. So it seemed like maybe looking at a way to open that up or make it somewhat usable for the people that live there might be nice. And then, let's see what else I had. As far as the elevations go, the elevations didn't have callouts to where some of these materials were on what we had in our packets. So that made it challenging, and then understanding what some of the materials are, I was, I didn't fully understand what the white panels are, because it looks like they're on maybe the balconies, but also above the windows on the top floor. And I thought, I couldn't tell if those were awnings above those on those kind of red portions. It looks like maybe there's an awning over that patio, but I couldn't tell for sure. It looked like on some of them, they had shadowing some. It might just be a pop-out. It also seems kind of high above the window and kind of awkward. So some of those proportions seemed kind of weird to me. Some of the placement of materials with stone kind of inset. But those, and then I, I'd like to see a rendering of this. I think reading them with these really long buildings, it's hard to understand them. And the push and pull in the way that these are actually going to appear, I think a rendering would go a long way on a project like this to help the board understand the building and what actually is happening. And maybe some of these things aren't a concern once we can see that. But when you're looking at it just straight on like that, I think some of that's kind of, the proportions seem a little off to me. So, oh, and on the garages, I think those need more work. I don't see that we have a rear elevation on those, and it looks like that's all one plane and it's just flat, and then we just have a paint color change if they could, you know. And I don't see those gables anywhere else in the design, so that was kind of an unusual introduction too. I don't know that they need that, but those are my comments. I don't think I had anything else.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Davis.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Commissioner Anderson, please.
Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. What's the reason behind the parking reduction of the covered spaces and then the garages? Why are they requesting that?
Commissioner Anderson, Chair Mont, so I believe the reduction for the proposed parking or the cover to enclose is just to accommodate the various forms of parking that would be required for multifamily due to some of the existing drainage issues and just the overall configuration of the site. The applicant was looking for a way to accommodate the various forms of parking that would be required for multifamily. With the first iteration of this project, there was a proposed deviation to include zero enclosed and zero covered parking spaces. So we've been working with the applicant to, I've been working with the applicant to make sure that these other forms have been proposed onsite.
Is the applicant from out of state? I mean, to not have a covered space during the summertime out here is kind of ridiculous to me. I'm not sure I really am bored with that request. If I'm understanding, the reasoning for it is they want to reduce it from one to 0.8 because of drainage issues on the site? Okay, that, I mean, that's something a civil engineer can figure out, I would think. And then, I don't know if this is a comment or a question for you guys, but how's the town, what's the town thinking of the rezone from Shopping Center to residential? I know that's a really tough area over there. That lot's been empty for a long time, and those restaurants are along there. It seems like Buffalo Wild Wings is the only one that can stay active there. And the other restaurants have been in and out, and I know there's a few that are empty there, so kind of torn on that one. I think having this type of use there might invigorate that area and get some new tenants in those restaurants that will be there long term. So what's, how's the, what's the town's kind of opinion on the rezone?
Chair Mont, Commissioner Anderson, so at this time, looking at the project, planning staff is generally supportive of the proposed rezone due to a few reasons. Of course, what you alluded to, that some of the commercial existing in the Gilbert Town Square area hasn't been completely viable. We have seen some, some high turnover from some of those commercial uses, especially for some of those uses tucked back further to the west. And I know just from having previous conversations, a lot of the ongoing drainage issues with this location has made it difficult for commercial development. So the introduction of a new form of multifamily too, which would be that age-restricted 55-plus, isn't something that we have very forms of in the town. So we believe that introducing the additional residents would help increase the commercial viability at this corner.
Okay, yeah, I kind of agree with that as well. And then, we got in the architecture. I kind of agree with Commissioner Davis. You know, it'd be nice to get some 3D renderings so you could really see like the in and outs of the building, because when you have a flat elevation like this, especially without any shadow lines and stuff like that, it gets, doesn't really give you excited about the architecture. So if they're able to provide that for the next, next time they present, I think that'd be very helpful for them. Other than that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Simon?
I guess I can't talk tonight. My mic wouldn't work. But no, Sal, thank you for the presentation. My only comment is that rear retention basin area, it looks like is going to be decomposed granite or stabilized granite back there. I don't see any area for a pet walk or anything along those lines. There's a couple of areas that are some artificial turf, but it seems to me that back area could be used as a dog walk or something. And if you've got a age-restricted community, you're going to have a lot of individuals who probably have small furry pets, so.
Thank you.
Which, of course, we're not generalizing that old people have small dogs. I just wanted to clarify that for the community.
I may or may not be.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Commissioner DeGravina?
Good presentation, Sal. I had the same concern as Commissioner Anderson about the 24% reduction in parking. And I kind of made an assumption that 55 and above communities drive a little bit less as we get older, but that wasn't taken into account when you agreed to that reduction. I think, so it's, I think it's a little bit steep to have a 24% reduction if that wasn't the reason for, for doing it.
Chair Mont, Commissioner DeGravina, and to your point, planning staff is still reviewing the provided parking study and administrative use permit, so we will be able to have additional information to the total counts.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Fay, thank you. Commissioner Anderson nailed my first two points, the concern about the zoning, and he said everything that needs to be said. I'm going to kind of pile on the parking. If this was coming before me tonight, I would vote against it just on the parking. I understand they can ask for a significant deviation downward, but there's, I don't see the justification and the drainage concern. I get they're in a flood zone because of the canal, but I don't see the drainage here as being anything complex to work out. And if it's one of the properties that's short on parking, this one's going to be a tough one because it's going to either spill over into the retail across the street or it doesn't really have anywhere to go, or it'll be crossing Gilbert. It'd just be a mess. If they can't fit this without the parking deviation, then they're trying to fit too much onto this property, and they need to go back to the drawing board and try to put something smaller that fits.
Can I jump in on that? I think there might be a little miscommunication or confusion on our end regarding, they're not asking for a parking reduction, overall parking reduction.
I thought they were asking for both.
They're asking for reduction in covered spaces and reduction in enclosed spaces, not overall spaces.
I thought we were asking for both.
And I can add to that. So there is an administrative use permit right now being reviewed by the planning staff for a overall parking reduction.
There is, okay.
Which is an avenue in the code two for 55-plus communities. But to your point, Commissioner Anderson, there still is a deviation tied to the PAD amendment that would reduce the amount of covered parking spaces and the enclosed parking spaces.
So what's the percentage of overall spaces they're requesting to reduce it by? Because we were throwing out the number 23 up here.
You're right, that's the covered.
That was the part for the garages. I mean, personally, I think we should get rid of that garage requirement altogether in this town. But, so how much are they looking to reduce the overall parking by?
Roughly 24%.
Okay, yeah, then I'm in line with Commissioner Fay. That's, I think that's a huge reduction.
Yeah, and to actually, the other part of that point, going between garage and covered, I don't really really care, but getting rid of covered altogether is not, and I don't say, how does drainage, covered parking affect drainage? I don't even make that connection that, that's, maybe there's a good explanation, but cognitively or logically, there's kind of a stretch for me to accept that as even the reasoning, much less agree to it. So I, if we're talking about goof, playing around with the numbers between garage and covered, that's a marketing problem as far as I'm concerned, getting rid of covered altogether, bad idea. Or significantly reducing the covered and significantly reducing the parking, both of those are, are in the, in a significant red flag category for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fay.
Anything else? All right. Yeah, my perspective is that the, I can't, for the life of me, understand how covered parking creates a drainage issue. So if the applicant can further explain that, that would be a civil engineering marvel that both Bill Fay and I as professional civil engineers have never heard of. I like the layout, but I also agree that it's hard to really tell. I know there was the little icon on the bottom that showed some of the, you know, how the building juts in and out, but it'd be good to see a better rendering of that. But other than that, I like the colors and the things of that nature. As for the zoning itself, I don't know. I'm going to have to research a bit on the economic differential between commercial and a 55 plus community. And, you know, I guess comparatively to what we have all taken infinite amounts of berating on of going to multifamily, it seems like we're sort of saying we're going to do multifamily, but don't worry, they're old. Whether that's a good thing or not, I don't know. But nonetheless.
And to clarify, 55 plus is not old.
No, no. No.
This is a youthful, vigorous citizen community is what we're calling it.
It's active, yes.
It's not until you get like 60 that you get old.
Yeah, I misspoke. This is an active community. My apologies, Sal. Maybe the golf carts won't fit in the parking. But nonetheless, hopefully did that answer all the questions that you were looking for, Sal?
Very much so. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, sir. That's a very nice O. Okay, moving on to item number two, ST 2502 Sheffield Place. And Ms. Nicole.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Commission, Nicole Russell, Senior Planner, Development Services. Tonight, we are going to look at the standard plans for Sheffield Place. For those that remember, this is a site that's approximately just a little bit shy of 15 acres that's located south and east of the intersection of Gilbert Road and Civic Center Drive. Back in May, the Planning Commission did hear the rezone request to turn it back from multifamily to single family to allow for a 67 lot subdivision for an SFD type of development. Here is the approved open space and landscape plan that was presented to the Commission as well as the Town Council several months ago. Here is the final, proposed final plat that has not been approved yet. That is part of the reason why the Commission is seeing the study session. Generally speaking, standard plans can be approved either after they go to a study session and approved administratively, or it can go to a full hearing as you have, the members of the Commission have seen before. Since the final plat has not been recorded, staff is bringing this as a study session. So once the final plat's recorded, staff can approve the standard plans. Here is the elevation matrix. The applicant is proposing four different architectural types with three different elevations. The first is the Spanish modern, and I do apologize, it was hard to get all the colors on the screen because there was just so many of them. So here's the elevations for the Spanish modern. It does have a lot of the architectural elements such as, let's see, do I have a red dot? They've got the little outcropping here for Spanish and they've got the red roof tiles. And here is the farmhouse. And this is some of the elevations for that with the farmhouse. They've got the board and bed and siding. They also have, forgive me, I cannot remember the name of the little bit right there at the apex of the roof. And they also have a craftsman. And here are the elevations for the craftsman. There are several different color palettes. I used the typical ones for the presentation. Here is the contemporary. And here's some of the colors. I apologize, it is 33 pages long and I couldn't fit it all on a few slides. And staff is looking for input. No motion is required at this time, and that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nicole. Who wants to give any questions or input, but no motion? No input. Commissioner Davis?
I'm so sorry. Thank you, Chair. As you know, I wasn't supportive of the design of the subdivision and I made a comment that I wanted to see the rear elevations enhanced. I want to say that I appreciate that it looks like they did that. They have nicer rear elevations than what we sometimes see. So that was, that made me happy to see that. I wouldn't be opposed to an enhanced side elevation for lots 144 and 67 along Gilbert Road, but, you know, not a sword I needed eye on, but it would be nice if the second floor was, because that's right when you drive in, that's what you're looking at. But I really do appreciate they did that. So I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis? Commissioner DeGravina?
I think when we looked at this, or when I looked at this last time, I thought it was a pretty busy and pretty crowded development. And you've got 67 homes with 3,000 square foot lots, even though they're two-story, but you still have 2,400 to 2,000 square foot homes there. So to me, it's going to be a little bit crowded and a little bit busy. But my other concern is that, or I shouldn't say concern, it looks like from what we've seen in the packet, that each of these homes have enough space to park two cars in the driveway. Is that correct?
Chairman, Commissioner DeGravina? Correct. It is a requirement to have a 20-foot-long driveway that can accommodate two vehicles.
And it looked like there was no additional parking besides the street.
The parking is dispersed throughout the neighborhood. I apologize, I did not put the parking plan that was approved as part of the pre-plat in the packet, but they do have sufficient parking for what they're required to have.
Commissioner Gage?
Thank you, Chair. On some of these side elevations, it looks like there's nothing around the windows. And I'm, I'm on page, on the bottom, it says 18 of 46. I don't know which one it is, but has that all been looked at by staff?
Chairman, Commissioner Gage? Yes. Part of the reasoning for asking, not asking them to do the architectural treatments around the window is there's literally 10 feet between the houses. And didn't feel that that was necessary since it's not going to be seen from the street. However, that being said, if you would like to see architectural treatments around the windows, I can definitely ask the applicant to do so.
Actually, I'd rather see that requirement go away in the code because it doesn't make sense to me either, but I've had to do it before on projects too. So I don't have any problem with not requiring it. And I think that that mindset is something that we need to think about further for other projects as they come forward.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very well. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question for you. Does the, do we still have an, I don't know if we still have it or if it was ever in our LDC where on these developments, you couldn't have like the same architectural style next to each other or across the way to just to kind of mix it up and so make the area a little bit more diverse? And it was the same with the colors too. I remember like a long time ago, when I first got involved with this type of stuff, that was, I think we were stipulating it, but I don't know if that ever made it into the LDC. But do we, do we have that type of requirement? So you can't have like two Spanish styles in the same, right, right next to each other or across from each other and the same with the colors and stuff?
Chairman, Commissioner Anderson? Yes, that is part of the residential design guidelines. So that would be something that when they are coming in for permit, they will show us which ones are going to be on which lot. So we make sure that they're not going to be adjacent and have two identical homes with the same coloring.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, very good. Hopefully that was a good amount of input for you, Nicole.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving right along to item number three, we have the southeast corner of Higley and Acateo Retail Center. We have Z 2513, S 2511, and D 25112. And we get to welcome our man Sal back.
Hello again, Commissioners. The project we'll be taking a look at is the southeast corner of Higley and Acateo Retail So looking at the case, it is going to include a few applications here. So the first one being a PAD and rezoning application from shopping center to general commercial, a design review for a three-pad commercial master site plan consisting of a user exceeding 75,000 square feet. And the third application is an administrative use permit requesting a 12 and 1/2% reduction in parking. Just to provide some context here, the subject site is outlined in blue and is roughly 16 acres and located at the southeast corner of Higley Road and Acateo Road. The subject site is part of the larger 243-acre Marbella Vineyards planned area development. The subject site is currently vacant and is directly adjacent to single-family zoning districts to the east, south, partially to the west with a community commercial to the west as well. And just to the north, we have a public facility institutional zoning district for a town of Gilbert recharge station. As part of the request, as I mentioned, the applicant is seeking to rezone the entirety of the site from shopping center to general commercial. The primary rationale for the rezoning is the shopping center zoning district limits a standalone user or building to 75,000 square feet. The proposed site plan includes a major commercial anchor that would exceed this threshold with an approximately 128,000 building footprint. At the time, the applicant is not seeking any deviations from the general commercial development standards. The proposed rezoning is just to accommodate the larger user onsite. And building off of that, there is no associated general plan amendment as it does currently hold the land use designation of general commercial. Looking at the site plan, there are three pads, two of which that are proposed up along Acateo Road and one larger tenant that is on the eastern portion of the site up along Wilson Way. Pad one is approximately 8,100 square feet and is anticipated to accommodate a sit-down restaurant. And pad two in the northwest corner is approximately 3,000 square feet and anticipated to be a financial institution. The major anchor here is anticipated to be 128,000 square feet and, as I mentioned, situated closer to that eastern property line. Parking has been distributed throughout the site, so, site with spaces being placed along the perimeters of the site and directly adjacent to the major entrances. The applicant has also submitted a 12 and 1/2% parking reduction onsite through an administrative use permit, and planning staff is currently reviewing that application concurrently with these. Vehicular access to the site is proposed off of Higley Road, where we'll find two, one of which being a full motion, one being a right-in, right-out, one up along Acateo Road, which is to be a right-in, right-out, and then a full access point along Wilson Way. The fencing and wall plan includes three-foot-high perimeter screen walls for the associated drive-through use as well as what they're showing, six-foot screen walls along the southern and eastern property line. But per our code, commercial adjacent to residential requires an eight-foot CMU screen wall. So we're working with the applicant to ensure that is provided on the updated set of plans. The project also has an associated phasing plan, which is to be completed in three phases. The first phase is the pad one development in the northeast corner, which would include the construction of the building itself along with the onsite and offsite improvements. Following that would be phase two, which we're proposed to see that major anchor, and that final phase would be the financial institution in the northwest corner. As for landscaping, the trees and plants are consistent with other materials found throughout Marbella Vineyards and provides a palette of trees and shrubs such as desert willow, Palo Verde, red pushed pistachio, and southern live oak. Currently, the overall landscape count is not currently met, but we are working with the applicant to ensure that all the required plantings are provided onsite. Moving over to the major tenant elevations, the building will reach an overall height of 35 feet to that tallest point on that architectural feature at the entryway, but the roofline itself will maintain a height between 24 feet 8 inches and 26 feet 8 inches. The exterior will be finished with stucco, which the proposed colors are cliffs, view, and slopes. And the stucco is to be accented by stacked stone veneer, concrete tilt-up panels, and bronzed aluminum. A raised tower element has also been presented along the storefront, along the main entrance to emphasize the main point of entry, as well as a expansive use of large storefront windows to build that natural light. Moving over to the north and south elevations, it just provides a better visual to what those elevations might look like. You'll also see the associated canopy here on that north elevation that is not connected to the building, but that is related to the associated online pickup spaces that are just in that parking field to the north of the structure. And here we have the pad one elevations, which is going to be that structure located in the northeast corner. The proposed height is 22 feet to the top of the parapet and it utilizes architectural style and colors found from the major anchor to tie into that overall cohesiveness. The roofline is generally fats, flat, similar to the major anchor with subtle variations introduced from the stacked stone and a metal canopy system along the front elevation that wraps into a patio feature to the east, or I'm sorry, to the west. And at this time, staff is just requesting some input from the Planning Commission in regards to the proposed zone change from SC to GC, general site design, and the elevations of the major tenant and pad one building. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sal. Who wants to kick it off? Commissioner Gage?
Thank you. Sal, I know that I was in attendance to the neighborhood meeting. Has there been any additional correspondence with the neighbors since that time?
Chairman, Commissioner Gage? Yes, there's been significant neighborhood correspondence. We've received, you know, various emails, calls since the neighborhood meeting that took place a few months back. General concerns are related to the use itself, noise, trash, odor, parking, and I'll be more than happy to provide a complete list of some of those other concerns for you, Commissioner Gage.
Is there, I just want to make sure that there's not going to be anybody that would be able to park along Wilson and walk into the development without going through that driveway there? Because I think that was a concern of the residents. Is that right? There's going to be a whole six-foot wall along the east side and south side?
Correct. So we're working with the applicant to place an eight-foot solid CMU wall along the entirety of the eastern property line as well as the southern property line. And to your point too, Commissioner Gage, that has been a concern from staff as well that any spillover parking may end up on Wilson Way. So we are in the process of analyzing the administrative use permit and we'll have some more information for you on a later date.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Vice Chair?
Sal, thank you. This, this project is firing on all cylinders as far as basically as I'm concerned. This, I know I give people a hard time about parking all the time. This is one that should be doing a downward deviation and so it's appropriate. And another thing I look at pretty closely And another thing I look at pretty closely is when there's multiple phasing, multiple phases, when is the infrastructure, when is the common good infrastructure, the drainage and the parking and such getting put in? This one, they're putting all of the infrastructure or all of the key common good features of the, in phase one. So this is a, this is, with one little ripple, this is exceptional. To the south, there's a drainage basin which belongs to the HOA. Our public outreach reaches across that, doesn't it, to the neighbors on the other side, or does it not? Does that serve as a disenfranchisement strip?
Commissioner Fay, so you're asking, I'm sorry, just for clarification on my part...
When we reach out to the neighbors, we have a certain geographic or geography that we reach out to distance?
Right.
The properties to the south, I've done this where I've done a lot split and then made it, made a drainage basin just to disenfranchise the neighbors from commenting or forcing a supermajority in Scottsdale. Sorry if you're from Scottsdale. I'm not, I'm not sympathetic to that. So if our, our community outreach should be careful to reach across that, and I imagine community outreach is going to be the only issue. Other than that, in terms of the engineering and design, everything, this, this project is great with me.
Thank you.
I never would have imagined that you would have done something like that, Vice Chair, but that's just fine. We learn a lot of new things every day. Anyone else have any input outside of nefarious deeds done by members? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Sal. I think this is a really, a nice project. That Target is a really nice-looking building. I just had one comment on pad one. I thought the north elevation was pretty blank facing out onto Ocatillo there, and those doors don't seem to dump out to a sidewalk or anything. They just kind of dump out into the landscaping. So it seems like maybe they could incorporate some of those high windows that they've got on the Target or something along that side to spruce up that north elevation. So I know they'll be landscaping there, but it's going to start out really small, and I think that they could do more on the arterial side of that building. So that's all I had.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
Very nice. Okay, well, I think that covers everything. All right, thank you very much, Sal.
Much appreciated.
Okay, moving right along, we get into item number four, which is the discussion of the regular meeting agenda. And I have, my good friend Keith has told me that item nine, which is currently on the consent, is going to be removed because he really wants to do a presentation. So there is, there's just one part of that that he wants to present on, actually, I was saying. And other than that, we have item eight, ST 2501 Bellistoria, item 10, UP 25-25 Self-Made Studios, and item 11, DR 24137 Aura Santan. Anyone have any issues with those on consent currently?
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
So on the public hearing, would it make sense to kind of reorganize the different, what we hear first? Because we have one, two, three land development codes, and at the very end, Wilbrook. Would it make sense to do Wilbrook and the item that's coming off consent? Have, have those guys have their hearings, and then they can get out of here, and then we could do the LDC text amendments after that?
It's a really good idea, because I think that's what mostly public attention would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would make sense. Maybe that, maybe they had put it at the end to try to enhance fatigue and make it easier, but we're going to. I'm kidding. Nobody does that. But as for the consent, then, is there anything else? And obviously, we can't move anything to consent that I'm aware of. Commissioner Gage?
I have a question on number eight that I don't know if it requires being pulled off of the agenda. It's more just a question. Should I talk with Abby in our break and then see what we need to do there?
I don't know if I'm allowed to authorize side deals of talks, but do whatever you're going to do during said break, outside of the purview of what I would authorize, of course. Elaine's listening. And we can decide then if we have to move that one. But other than that possible movement, everything else good. And unless anyone else that's here wishes to speak on any of those items, if you are in the vast crowd this evening, please fill out a yellow comment card that is found in the back on the table near the agendas so that I would know, and then we could move that off. All right.
Chairman, I would make, I would move this point to approve the agenda as written, with the exception of moving item nine off of consent and moving it into the public hearing non-consent.
I think we do that during the next meeting.
Oh, we do? We don't do that now?
Yeah.
Never mind. I mean, I move to never mind.
Yeah. First of all, I love the enthusiasm, and that's why, you know, we have such a great group of commissioners. But for now, I will adjourn the study session, and we will be back here in five minutes, six o'clock sharp, assuming that Commissioner Gage can have whatever conversation. Thank you. Okay, I think we can get started now. Commissioner Gage is done. Not a problem. Okay. Let's get to the main event, and I will call to order the regular meeting here. And please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Ashley, could we please get a roll call?
Commissioner Wong? Commissioner Lyon? Commissioner DeGravina?
Here.
Commissioner Gage?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Simon?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Fay?
Here.
And Chairman Munt?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, now we'll move on to item number five, the discussion and approval of the agenda. And as we had discussed, the consent item number nine is going to be removed. I'm also going to then say we could have it go from number nine on the non-consent to number 15, and then come back to 12, 13, and 14. So whether we need to have that put into order, my understanding is that item number eight is able to stay. So eight, 10, and 11 would stay on the consent agenda unless anyone out there is looking to speak on those items. All right, so I don't see that. So with that being said, unless there's any other discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the agenda as written, except removing item nine from the public hearing consent. from the public hearing consent and moving it on to the public hearing non-consent.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Simon. Please cast your vote. All right, motion carries.
Do we need to do a motion to reorder things or can we just do that administratively?
I'll just call them.
Yeah. Call the, call item nine and item 15. Okay.
Okay. We will move now to the communications portion and item six, communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. The commission may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore, pursuant to state law, action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration. As now, I do not have any comment cards for this section. And is there anyone who wished to speak on items not on the agenda that did not get a comment card filled out? Not seeing any, we will move on to item number seven and the report from the council liaison on current events. Councilmember Lyons.
We do have coming up next week Veterans Day and there will be a car show at three o'clock, followed by a ceremony beginning at five o'clock. So encourage everybody to come and become a part of that and celebrate those who have served our nation faithfully. So thank you.
Thank you. And where is that, councilmember?
The car show is down by the water tower area and I think the ceremony is here at the complex.
The complex, very nice. Okay, thank you, sir. Now into the public hearing consent. All items listed below are considered for the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. As it stands, our current consent calendar is item eight, ST 2501 Bellistoria. Item 10, UP 2525 Self-Made Studios. And item 11, DR 24137 Orasanta. I will entertain a motion on the consent.
Chairman Munt, I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of items eight, 10, and 11.
We have a motion from the vice chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner De Gravina. Please cast your vote. Okay, item passes 7-0. Into the public hearing non-consent. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. That being said, we will go to item nine, DR 25-52 Gilbert Gateway Commerce Park. And everyone's favorite, Mr. Keith Newman.
Chairman Munt, members of the commission. Chairman Munt, you are too kind. So Gilbert Gateway Commerce Park. We appreciate you moving this off of the consent agenda, putting it on the non-consent agenda. And the reason we wanted to move this is to bring up to you a change in condition number three. So if I can show you condition number three, unless you would like a full presentation, I'm prepared to do either, but I would just, the main thing was that we wanted to just revise and change a condition.
As much as I would enjoy that, Keith, I know for the interest of time, we will just stick to that unless anyone else. Okay, yeah.
Perfect. So at the very back of my presentation, I show the revised condition or the proposed concurrent condition, the original condition, the revised condition. So the original condition is, it says, final approval of the proposed site is contingent upon the approval of the abandonment of the existing, of existing Sparrow Court right-of-way, which runs between those two buildings. Right in the middle, splitting the site. So we would like to revise that to, just rephrase that to make it more clear, to make it more, to state, abandonment of Sparrow Court in accordance with condition M of ordinance 2950, which is the zoning ordinance that came before, that was approved by council, I believe it was in June. And it shall be completed prior to building permit issuance. So Sparrow Court, which runs right down through the middle of the site. I had a graphic right here. So it's right here down through the middle of the site. That whole thing is not going to be abandoned, which the condition kind of, kind of says that the whole thing's going to be abandoned, but only the cul-de-sac, you can see kind of at the bottom is that, that little kind of hatched area where there used to be a cul-de-sac. The only thing that's being abandoned is the cul-de-sac. So we wanted to revise the condition to make it clear that what was approved for abandonment per the zoning ordinance, which is just the cul-de-sac portion, is the only part that's being abandoned. And that that will have to be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit. Because this little drive that runs through the middle of the site provides secondary access to the storage facility to the south. So that is the only change we wanted to make, just make the condition a little more clear because it was a little, it was a little confusing. So that, that's it. So we would recommend that you approve this project, subject to the revised condition in, that I just presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. Did anyone have any questions or comments for Keith prior to a vote? I just have one question as it relates to the functional element of abandonment. When, does that just mean they say, okay, it's abandoned? Like, or do they have to tear it up? And like, is there actual, are there other, I just want to make sure that what we say is going to cover what needs to be done.
Chairman Munt, members of the commission. I'm not sure I understand the question, if you can kind of rephrase that.
What, what goes into the abandonment? Like, it, because the way it says that it'll be abandoned prior to being completed, it almost seems more that it would be, it's being abandoned, or only this one part is being abandoned. I guess, maybe that's the semantics, but it seems as though it was thought through. It just, the way I read it, it seemed like, I don't know, if I'm saying I have to do something prior to this, what is that thing I need to do?
Yeah, Chairman Munt, members of the commission, I appreciate you rephrasing that. They will have to submit a, I believe it's a, in our town, one of our engineers, Tom Condit, is here, can answer that probably even better, but I think they have, I believe they have to submit in a, in a right-of-way abandonment application and go through that process with our engineering department. And I believe that will happen at the same time as the CD review and approval. If that answers your question.
Yeah, that does, that answers it. That, that's good. Well, it, it may, but it actually, sorry, the presentation actually created more questions for me.
Uh-oh.
Because it's actually the public that abandons the right-of-way. They apply to abandon it. If it's right-of-way, they don't actually, well, they don't own the easement. And what's wrong with it being right-of-way? If it's right-of-way, then it provides access to the property. Why would you abandon it as right-of-way? Why wouldn't you leave it as right-of-way?
Chairman Munt, members of the commission. So the slide in front of you shows that, that cul-de-sac bulb. The reason the applicant is proposing to abandon it as right-of-way, just the portion of the cul-de-sac that pops out and you can see it, it's kind of hatched, is, is so that they can comply with, so that the right-of-way is not going in between the middle of their buildings. And it's not, it's an element that's not needed for a turnaround function. So it'll help them place the buildings where they want to place them and at the shape and size that they're proposing them.
Oh, so they're not, they're not abandoning the whole right-of-way, they're just the hammerhead piece?
Just the hammerhead piece. And, and you can kind of see it hatched on the screen.
Well, it is, but the whole hammerhead's hatched. I didn't realize you were just talking about the shaded portion.
Yeah, it's just the shade, sorry, I should have said the word shaded.
I understand.
It's the shaded portion only, but the whole right-of-way will continue to go through to provide access to the storage facilities, just that part.
Got it, no problem.
Sorry if I didn't explain that correctly.
It's okay, it's probably just us engineers.
I should have said the word hatched, a shaded instead of hatched, maybe.
Yeah. Okay. Well, very good then, unless anyone else has any questions or comments. I, I guess I'll open it up for public comment. I don't have any cards. Is there anyone here that wished to speak on this item? Not seeing any, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the dais and entertain discussion or a motion if we're ready.
Chairman Munt, I would move to approve item nine with the addendum or the amendment of the change in language related to the abandonment of the right-of-way.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Simon. Please cast your vote. Motion carries 7-0. Moving right along, we are going to hop to item number 15 in the essence of time. And S 2503 Willowbrook. And Ms. Kristin Devine.
Chair, I need to recuse myself.
Oh, yes, and we have a recusal from Commissioner Gage.
All right, good evening, commission. The case I have for you tonight is for the preliminary plat for the Willowbrook community. This community is located on 156th Street and Riggs. This is just east of Val Vista. This is the approved development plan for the project. A little bit of history on this project. You originally saw this back in August. It was put on the council agenda. It was continued because there was some traffic concerns. It just recently went back to council in October and the rezoning for that was approved. So we are back before you with the preliminary plat today. The development plan that was approved was seen on the screen here. It's zoned SF6 with a planned area development. It's approximately 26.4 acres with a density of 3.4 or 5 dwelling units per acre. The red dots on the bottom indicate single-story restrictions on those specific lots. So seen here is the specific preliminary plat. It consists of 91 lots. Again, that single-story restriction is on lots 76 to 91. The minimum lot size requirement is 6,600 square feet and there's about 18% of open space for the community. Some more specific details on what those lot sizes actually look like. Although the minimum is 6,600 square feet, most of the lots do range from 6,720 square feet to 7,575 square feet, with 53 of those lots exceeding even 7,000 square feet. So there was a lot of concerns during the rezoning process about traffic and the desire for a traffic light, which ultimately was not warranted. So a compromise that was made with the applicant and with staff was to install this sort of U-turn condition that you're seeing on the screen here. So instead of putting a traffic light at 156th, the proposed compromise is to turn right up of 156th with a left turn lane being installed east of the development so that they can then U-turn to go back west down Riggs Road, hopefully using some of that wait time that they're experiencing, the residents off of 156th trying to turn left. All right, and this is just highlighting the open space plan for the community. The community is adjacent to an SRP substation. You can see that there's a significant amount of landscaping that buffers that station from the community with the amenity space being placed there as opposed to houses. There's also an eight-foot separation wall between that facility and the community. And then there also is a trail connection that leads out to Riggs Road through the community and connects down to the Marathon Ranch community to the south. Some of the amenities that are included in this development are pickleball court, Ramadas, picnic tables, play structure, and a swing set. And then this is just highlighting what those two different signs for the community are going to look like. The primary entry sign is going to be located on Riggs Road, which you can see on the right. And then the 156th Street entrance is going to be kind of placed on the, the wall of the entrance there. And you can see that on the left. All right, and with that, we do recommend approval of the preliminary plat for Willowbrook and I am available for your questions if you have them.
Thank you very much, Kristin. Anybody have any questions or comments for her? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Chair. Kristin, the amenity space that's located kind of on the scent, in the kind of northeast corner of the site. I mean, I'm going to be a little contrary to my normal self here. I understand wanting to provide screening for the SRP site there from this neighborhood to have that buffer. It seems like there's an excessive amount of trees, even from their interior streets into their amenity space as far as their pickleball courts, their playground area. I just, I feel like that's, it's an extra burden on the HOA. I feel like over the years, sometimes these HOAs will just take them out. Water, I know, is sensitive right now. It just seemed, is there a reason why it's so, has so many trees?
So Chairman Munt, Commissioner Davis, this was how it was originally proposed. I, I appreciate the buffering from the substation. I know that the wall is also there too, but landscaping does kind of help add to that. But no, there was no specific requirement as far as I'm aware of putting them specifically in that location.
I just thought maybe they could thin it a little bit out, you know, not right up against the substation, but out in front of their amenity space, just to provide visibility into those spaces and maybe just take some of that burden off. They're really, really cramped in there, it looked like to me. So just maybe an opportunity for them to not saddle the HOA with that.
Yeah, no, we'd be happy to.
One day and it would still look lovely, I'm sure. So that's just my comment on that, so.
I'd be happy to take a look at that. And it is something that sounds like if we, we do want to thin those trees out a little bit, we may be able to just do that administratively over the counter to modify the landscape plan.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Simon?
I just have one comment and, and that is, I think I probably raised the most issue with regards to the traffic and, and I appreciate the town and the applicant working together to find a solution that it looks like, not necessarily maybe the exact solution the community wanted, but I think that it's a good compromise, so thank you.
Yeah, so Chairman Munt, Commissioner Simon, thank you very much. Our traffic team worked really hard to come up with the solution. There was a lot of different alternatives that were thrown out there. But until that neighborhood to the north comes in, this is the best option that we came up with.
Very good. Okay. Then I do not have any comment cards, but I will open up the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right, not seeing any, I will close the public comment and bring it to the dais for discussion or a motion.
Chair?
Commissioner Simon?
I was just going to make a motion to approve the findings of fact and recommend approval to the town council.
Of what?
Of what? Of...
Well, don't, aren't we supposed to say the number?
S 2503.
Yes.
Willowbrook.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Chairman, I second Commissioner Simon's motion to approve item 15 S 25-03.
Okay, we have a motion for item 15 S 2503 Willowbrook. And we have a second from Vice Chair. Please cast your vote. Motion carries. Okay, and I, and I only said that because I wanted to make sure, because we went out of order. Somebody, can somebody that knows where Commissioner Gage is, let her know that she can now return? I'll just wait a minute for her to return before I start the next one, procedurally not to cause any issues. Commissioner Gage, thank you for joining us. Okay, next item on the agenda, item 12, Z 25-10 LDC text amendment, HBC development standards. And Kristin.
It's been so long since I've seen you. Okay, so the project that I have for you now is for an LDC text amendment to the HBC development standards. You've seen largely a lot of this presentation before, so I'll try to kind of move as quickly through it as I can so we're not super doubling down on information. But the general quest for this is to increase height within the heritage district. Some background as to how we got here, did go through a handful of council retreats where an 03 presentation was provided, highlighting the different economic impacts of the different types of development. Staff researched different communities to see how they approach height. We provided that information. communities to see how they approach height. We provided that information to council. A lot of follow-up retreat. We provided some visual representation. We were asked to kind of keep moving forward, reach out to different stakeholders and see what increased height could do for our district. And for the next two slides, I will hand it over to Mike to kind of touch on the economic impacts.
Thank you, Kristin. Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners, pleasure to be here. Mike Martella, the redevelopment program manager in the Office of Economic Development. So this slide right here, in, in twenty-twenty-three, Urban Three completed a comprehensive economic analysis of Gilbert with an emphasis on employment corridors, including the Heritage District. Their findings underscore a critical point as Gilbert approaches build-out. Gilbert must be strategic with its remaining land. That means encouraging gentle density with a mix of uses, especially in areas like the Heritage District, to ensure that the tax base can support both current services and future growth. So this slide highlights Urban Three's findings regarding taxable value by acre in Gilbert. In the graphic in the upper right corner, and then in the lower left corner, it highlights the sales privilege revenue by acre and value per acre by building type. The brown bar represents the value per acre by building type, and the blue bar represents the sales privilege by acre. So when considering the current conditions in the Heritage District, Gilbert, Gilbert mostly falls within that low and medium density categories of mixed use. But this, this text amendment modifies the two thousand and five policy, going from fifty-five feet to seventy-five feet, which is an increase of twenty-five percent over twenty years. It really creates opportunities for medium and high-density mixed-use developments illustrated in the lower and middle-right boxes to maximize both sales privilege and by acre and value per acre by building type. So, you know, this analysis also shows that mixed-use developments such as the collab and building three-one-three produce, you know, high return on investment and fiscally productive properties in, in the district. Why is maximizing value per acre important? So it's also important to know that Gilbert is primarily a residential community. Its operations are largely funded through sales privilege taxes, in part because the town does not have a primary property tax. And due to that, it makes it essential to increase the productivity of its commercial and industry-focused areas, especially as the town reaches full build-out. So kind of summarize, this twenty-five percent increase in twenty-five, in twenty years, like this proposed text amendment, can have a really meaningful impact on long-term fiscal sustainability, allowing Gilbert to maintain the high quality of life for residents and businesses alike. And back to Kristin.
So in addition to all that information, another driving factor is from our redevelopment plan. In it, we call out the desire for an eighteen-hour downtown, somewhere where residents can live, work, and play on the same district. In an area like the Heritage District, parcels are very small. To achieve this goal, you have to build upwards instead of outwards, like in an area maybe like Cooley Station, where you have more of the capability of building horizontal mixed use instead of vertical mixed use. So what we're requesting is to go from a maximum height of fifty-five feet and four stories to a maximum height of seventy-five feet. We do currently require step backs adjacent to single-family residential. Those step backs are required above two stories. We don't offer any sort of bonus incentives for height. To get increased height right now, you would have to go through PAD through the town council or an administrative relief request to increase height. So what we're proposing again is seventy-five feet across the entirety of the HBC zoning district. We would require step backs adjacent to residential, keep that requirement. We would also want to incorporate them along Gilbert Road as well. We would want those Gilbert Road step backs to start at the fifty-five foot mark. That would be one foot per foot in height. And we would keep the two-story requirement when adjacent to single-family residential. We are also asking for a bonus incentive structure for parcels located off of Gilbert Road. If these parcels incorporate a number of items that we will touch on in just a few slides, they could potentially get an increase in height of up to ninety feet. So this map here is just highlighting where those different heights can actually go. The purple is highlighting where seventy-five feet is the maximum. They're not eligible for bonus heights. The red is highlighting where ninety feet could be possible if they do incorporate those bonus items. And we do have a provision in the proposed text amendment that allows for parcels such as this weird, weird little guy up here that's kind of like a flag lot. Although he does touch Gilbert Road, it's not buildable at the build-to line. So we, we would want that parcel to be eligible for possibly going up to ninety feet as well, which could be determined at the discretion of the planning manager. So for weird parcels like that, we do have a provision to kind of address those. So those bonus items that we would like to incorporate are two different categories. We have a choose-one category and a choose-two category. The choose-one category are more substantial items like underground parking, ten percent of excess public parking above what they're required to already put on-site, and the entirety of the building being developed in non-combustible construction types. If you choose one of those items, you get the increased height. You can build up to ninety feet. Or you can choose two items from the circle on the right. This includes ten percent open space and landscaping in the Heritage District. We don't have a requirement for landscaping, so this is a benefit. A certain percentage of art based on the si, uh, the construction costs of your building, public amenities like ride-share spaces, things like that, step-back requirements, and sustainability. We chose seventy-five feet based off of our current development, researching other communities, and also developer conversations. Our current development consists of eight structures right now that are approved and/or built that do exceed the fifty-five feet requirement today. The bottom four do fall within that seventy-five foot requirement that we are looking to change the code to. This includes Heritage Park Buildings. It includes the University Building and the collab. And then you do have a couple that are even taller than that, with the water tower, of course, being the tallest structure we have at a hundred and twenty-five feet. Most of these were established using a PAD through the town council, but there are a handful like Heritage Park Building Eight that were done through administrative relief. These are just two examples of existing buildings that exceed fifty-five feet. So both of these buildings are four feet tall. We have the collab, and we have the University Building. The collab is four stories and it is sixty-four feet. The University Building, four stories and seventy, uh, almost seventy feet. So in addition to the community research, we also went on a walking tour of the district because the water tower is always a conversation of trying to preserve that view of the water tower. So we wanted to get a pedestrian perspective of where you can see the water tower from today. These are six different vantage points within the district and photos of how the water tower looks from those points. This is one of those points, Gilbert and Vaughn on the southeast corner, of how you can see the water tower today with a single-story development. But if you were to take that development and you would build it to fifty-five feet, which is allowed by right today, you would then not be able to see that water tower. So you can see that on the left, and then the image on the right is just if you happen to add the twenty feet extra that we are requesting to increase the height to, what that could potentially look like. So this is just highlighting some of the communities that we chose as comparative communities. We chose them largely due to their proximity to the Phoenix area. Some of them are benchmark communities, but a lot of them are really just general communities of interest from staff that have worked on the research for this. This is highlighting the heights for those districts. The yellow indicates fifty-five feet. The green indicates seventy-five feet. And you can see that there are five of these communities that do exceed the seventy-five feet that we're requesting today. So included one example for you today of those communities. So this is the south end of Charlotte, North Carolina. They allow a maximum height of fifty to a hundred and thirty feet, and they do incorporate a bonus structure, which is kind of where we took inspiration from for the bonus structure we're proposing, where they allow seventy-five feet to three hundred feet. We are not requesting anything as crazy as three hundred feet, but we did get kind of our, our structure for the bonus system from them. So in addition to community research, we reached out to a handful of different developers and architects. The main takeaways we took away from that conversation is that building heights have increased over time, largely due to accommodate the higher floor-to-ceiling heights that are being seen with different uses that are popular right now. A lot of those uses are experience-based uses in boutique-style Class A offices, where users are looking for more of a hotel amenity-style office feel as opposed to large office complexes. So this slide is just highlighting an average of what those different developers and architects explain that they're seeing for different floor heights for these uses. For commercial, they're seeing an average of sixteen to twenty-two feet. Office, twelve to sixteen feet. Residential, ten to thirteen feet. For an ideal building height of seventy-five feet, once you get over seventy-five feet, you start encroaching into like a high-rise building code, which is why seventy-five feet is kind of the sweet spot. The construction requirement for above that gets a little more substantial above seventy-five feet. So this is taking those numbers and it's building a concept development. So right now our code does allow four stories, but it does have a maximum height restriction of fifty-five feet. So if you took those heights from the previous slide and you did a ground-floor commercial at twenty feet, and you stacked three floors of office above it at sixteen feet each, that would bring this building to a total height of sixty-eight feet, which even though it's four stories, it does now exceed our maximum height requirement. So they wouldn't be able to develop that within the town today without having to go through a rezoning process. These next couple of slides are just concepts of what a building could look like at these increased heights. So this is the chamber site. The top image is showing a concept development at fifty-five feet. It's three stories. It's got fifty-three thousand square feet of parking, nine thousand square feet of ground-floor commercial, and forty-three thousand square feet of office and amenities. If you took that and you added two stories to it, the image on the bottom shows that development at seventy-two feet. The parking remains the same at fifty-three thousand with ground-floor commercial of nine thousand, but you've then increased your office and amenities space to almost seventy-three thousand square feet. Just that development in a larger context. We wanted to provide an example of the bonus structure option as well. So this is Vaughn and Oak on the northwest corner. The top image shows a four-story development at fifty-five feet. It's got eighty-two thousand square feet of parking, ground-floor commercial at eighteen thousand six hundred square feet, with two hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot of residential, and also the incorporation of some town homes along that stretch of oak. If you took that development, though, and you added three stories to it, your development would then be seven stories at ninety-two feet tall. That extra two feet is allowed due to encroachment for height with parapets and mechanical equipment. The parking would then increase to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet. Ground-floor commercial would remain the same at eighteen thousand six hundred, and your residential would increase to three hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet. This concept development on the bottom did incorporate underground parking. It did incorporate excess public parking, and it did incorporate landscaping. And this is just that development in a larger context. So this is just highlighting what the different steps are for this project and where we are today. We're currently on step five, which is the Planning Commission Public Hearing Recommendation. From here, we will go to town council for a study session on November eighteenth, and from there, it'll ultimately go to decision with the town council after that. So redevelopment commission study session feedback. We took this to study session on September seventeenth. The feedback we received from those commissioners was that they were generally supportive of the increase in height. We did address the distancing from Gilbert Road for parcels that don't have buildable space ten feet from Gilbert Road. How does the height increase impact older buildings? Building permitting will remain the same. The review process is the same. How will parking be managed? Some resident feedback. Three residents did speak, highlighting that the height change should be managed, the redevelopment plan, and that if possible, the two-hundred to three-hundred block of Gilbert Road shouldn't be part of this. So from there, we took it to a study session with you on October first. A lot of feedback was concerns with parking. Why is this necessary? What was the feedback from the redevelopment commission? Are there specific users driving this request? At that hearing, we did have two residents that spoke. The feedback was largely the same, but also they requested the desire to keep fifty-five feet on Gilbert Road and allow taller buildings elsewhere within the district. So parking keeps coming up and is a, a hot topic when it comes to increasing height. So I wanted to highlight how we handle parking today. This parking requirement is not going to change. Within the district, we do allow off-site parking for commercial uses through an administrative use permit process, but to be eligible for that, you have to be a non-residential use. You have to have available vacant parking within one thousand feet of your parcel, and the parking AUP is only eligible for as we have parking available. So if, if a building does come in and it wants to build to seventy-five feet, if they don't have this available parking within one thousand feet of their parcel, or they're not able to self-park themselves, then they, they just can't build to seventy-five feet. They have to be able to develop to what their parcel allows. So we took this to the redevelopment commission for their recommendation, and the feedback was that they were overall supportive of it. It received a recommendation approval of four to zero. There was a little bit of back-and-forth conversation about whether ninety feet was enough for the bonus height, and that maybe a hundred and ten feet to a hundred and twenty feet could be more beneficial when it comes to construction costs and making developments pencil. When it came down to voting on it, their decision was to keep it at ninety feet, with the possibility of maybe revisiting, increasing that height even further through conversations with the community during the redevelopment plan renewal in twenty-twenty-eight. In addition to that, we do also now have a position statement from the Chamber of Commerce, which provided a letter of support for a height increase as well, which was included in your staff report packet. So just to summarize again, what we are requesting is an increased height within the HBC zoning district. This creates a more streamlined and quicker process, so that projects are not having to go through a six-to-twelve-month rezoning process. It brings the code into better alignment with developments, so that four-story developments could come in, even though they exceed the fifty-five feet in height. It does have positive economic impacts, and it is consistent with development trends. And for that, we do recommend your recommendation of approval to the town council, and I am available for your questions.
Thank you very much, Kristin. Anyone have any questions for her? Commissioner DeGervina?
Uh, Kristin, a great presentation. I'm just a little bit confused on this fifty-five foot requirement with four stories to go to seventy-five feet. Are we still staying within four stories? And what is the maximum number of stories that you guys think is appropriate for this area, if we're going above the four stories?
Sure. So Chairman, Commissioner DeGervina, we are eliminating the four-story requirement, and we are just keeping it at a height requirement now. So instead of having a height requirement and the story requirement, we're just doing seventy-five feet. So that kind of gives a bit more flexibility on what your floor-to-floor heights can be and how many stories fit within that seventy-five-foot development. Realistically, you're only adding probably one, maybe two stories to a development with this increase in height.
So you are going above the four stories, then?
If the development comes in, it, if it's within seventy-five feet and they can fit six stories, then yes, but they can't exceed that seventy-five feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Simon?
Kristin, thank you for the presentation. I do have a couple of comments, questions. Can you go back to the slide that shows the impacted buildings based on the seventy-five? There you go with that one. So with regards to parking, and I know that this comes up quite a bit, your stipulations in the packet, if they choose to want to go over the, the seventy-five feet, they get to seventy-five to ninety feet, you're basically allowing them to choose one or the other. Choose one to get to the seventy-five feet, and then or two to get to the ninety feet?
Sure. So Chairman, Commissioner Simon, what we're requesting is a blanket increase over HBC to seventy-five, so all HBC projects could go to seventy-five feet. Those bonus structures to do with increased parking capacities, that would be to go from seventy-five to ninety for parcels off of Gilbert Road, so they can't touch Gilbert Road.
Okay. I, I guess a cou, a couple of things that, that really create hesitation in me, and I voiced pretty significant concerns the last time we talked about this in the study session. With regards to increasing height, I understand the complexities behind trying to get through additional height if you need it by request for PAD or what, whatnot. But I feel like we've talked in length with regards to how office space is not being needed or utilized. We've got the Rivian that's sitting eighty percent empty or whatever it is now. And obviously, we're, excuse me, trying to, trying to do forward-looking, but what I see is you'll get twenty feet plus on the first floor for, you know, a Class A restaurant. And then you, you might get office on the second floor if there's, and I don't know what you would call it, we'll call it a, a deck area for a, a third-floor restaurant slash patio eating potentially. And then you're getting it residential above that, which, because I don't see office going higher. Yes, you've got the collab, which we continue to go back to the collab and say, hey, look, if we do this, we're going to get all of this. We have that at Rivian, and we don't, we don't have it. So that's where my hard piece is on this, trying to retain what we have in the Heritage District, although it is, in essence, a false downtown, right? So it, the, I have some struggle. If we go to residential, I would almost put a requirement, not a choice, that they go to subterranean parking for the residential, if any of the buildings come as, in his residential, because the lot sizes are so small, I just don't see them being able to sustain any parking that would substantiate any type of residential. So then, then we're talking retail and office, and that's it. Granted, I understand the politics behind, hey, we need to figure out our tax basis. We need to figure out our long-term sustainability of the community and all those things, and that's not our purview on the Planning Commission. But looking at it from a holistic perspective, this almost feels to me like it's playing politics with, yeah, we'll grant it, but we know nobody's going to come in and build it. So I just struggle with a lot of different things that are, that are in here. I struggle with losing what the Heritage District is and has become. I, I do not want it to be a, a lot of one-story... I do not want it to be a lot of one-story total alcohol sale buildings, right? I think that there's some great things that can be done in the Heritage District or the HVC, but I feel like this height, in my mind, when I put a practical application to it, just doesn't make sense. So that's all I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Simon, any other comments or questions? Well, then, I will open up the public comment. I do not have any comment cards. Is anyone here wishing to speak on this item that has not filled out a comment card? All right, not seeing any public comment. I will close the public portion and bring it back up to the dais for discussion or a motion. Commissioner Simon?
I'll make a point of discussion, and that is, from a business perspective, I completely understand needing to find revenue for the community. I get that density and height potentially drives that. I guess we need to really take a deep dive into what the long-term viability and what we want this downtown area to look like, and if this is where we want to go with it, and if this is the right time to do it. So I just, I feel like I'm just struggling with this decision, because I can see it both directions, so.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Lot of chatty Cathy's. Well, then, if anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make it. For reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z2510 as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
We have a motion and a second, a very thorough, beautiful motion, Commissioner. All right, please cast your votes. Moving right along into item number thirteen, Z2511, LDC text amendment, middle housing. And we'll bring Ashley down from the high ground over there. And like I say, I love middle housing because it's very Tolkien-esque. It sounds like we're going to Middle Earth.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. First, I'll apologize to Jan. I think you've heard this presentation as many times as I've given it, so I will try and make this entertaining perhaps. Z2511 is an LDC text amendment related to middle housing. By way of background, the Senate last year, as part of House Bill 2721, adopted legislation that requires cities and towns to address middle housing within our ordinances. So by January first of 2026, we have to authorize by ordinance regulations that would allow for the development of what is called middle housing, and that comprises, that's comprised of duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhomes. We have to do this on all lots within one mile of our central business district. Last year, the town designated the Heritage District as our central business district related to this bill so that we could comply with these provisions. We also have to authorize it on twenty percent of any new development that's ten contiguous acres or more. So if we don't adopt these regulations before January first, middle housing would be allowed on all lots zoned for single-family within the town without limit. And so we are moving forward with this text amendment in order to comply with the state law. As I've previously mentioned through study sessions, House Bill 2721 outlines specific things that cities and towns cannot regulate as part of our ordinances, specifically that we can't limit homes or limit these middle housing developments to less than two stories. We can't restrict the floor-area ratio of the development. We can't make the permitting and approval process any more onerous or restrictive than those of other single-family lots within the same zoning districts. We can't require that the owners occupy any structure on the lot or that they comply with building codes or have sprinklers. And then lastly, we can't require more than one parking space per unit. So you'll see through our draft of this ordinance, compliance with these specific items, but it's worth mentioning, just as we go through, that that's why you'll see this version drafted the way it is. The Senate bill, or the bill, also defined what a duplex, floorplex, townhome, and triplex is specifically, and so in order to comply with those definitions, we've added them to our code. They're under the category of middle housing, so these definitions would apply to middle housing development, not, this wouldn't replace our typical duplex definition within the code because of the uniqueness of the bill language in that duplexes, for example, can be detached units. It's not typically what we see, and so these definitions would pertain specifically to middle housing development types. How we're addressing where these would be allowed is by updating our Use Regulation Table 3.1.2 by adding a use category of middle housing that would be permitted in all single-family zoning districts, and then it refers on the right-hand side of that column to some additional standards where we're adding in a new section to our code related to middle housing. A couple of things to note as it relates to middle housing and our provision of the code, as I mentioned, we do have to allow it within one mile of our central business district. We wanted to add language that clarified that it has to be located entirely within that one-mile buffer area, so if just a small corner of your lot is within that one-mile area, it wouldn't qualify. The lot would need to be entirely within the mile area. We also wanted to add a provision that did allow for the development of middle housing within our central business district. That's not a requirement of the statute, but given our central business district, we thought that it made sense to allow these to be developed within it as well, not just within the buffer area. And then related to new development, greater than ten contiguous acres, that's not specific to the central business district, that's across the town. The provisions within the bill indicate that it has to be on twenty percent of new development, but it didn't clarify whether that meant area or number of lots. So our code will do that. It will clarify that it can't occupy more than twenty percent of the total net area, and it can't occupy more than twenty percent of the lot, so we're requiring that it meet both of those at the twenty percent. We're also providing four development standards. This ensures that it complies with that provision that says we can't make it more restrictive or onerous than other single-family developments within the lot. One thing I will point out related to this is item number four, where we are limiting the number of townhome units to four. There was no limit in the bill for four, however, we think this is consistent with their definition of the fourplex. We also indicate in here that townhouses are not eligible for accessory dwelling units, thereby, you know, quadrupling the density in these areas. And then we're also adding in a section related to the application process, just to ensure it's clear that folks understand what that application process is. For a kind of one-off middle housing development that's going on a single lot, they would go straight to building permit, and then that's where it would be verified that they meet all of the development standards. For projects that are part of a larger ten-acre or more development, they would follow the same process as the rest of the developments in that unit, so you would see those as a preliminary plat, a final plat, standard plans. Those would go through that process. I mentioned we can't require more than one parking space per unit, so we've added a use classification of middle housing to our parking section so that we can establish what the parking requirement is for middle housing. We're also adding in our central business district and buffer area map, just for clarity, into the code so that we know what area we're talking about when we refer to the central business district. With that, staff does recommend approval of this text amendment, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have or take any feedback you might have.
Thank you very much, Ashley. So bringing it up here, does anybody have any comments or questions for Ashley? Vice Chair, take it away.
Could we go back to that parking slide a little bit more? I know the last time we had talked, we were still fleshing out the answers, and my question was, is it one spot per unit or one spot per bedroom? And we were still fleshing that out, because the statute said unit, but it looks like you fleshed it out, and it's essentially one per bedroom.
It's one space per unit, so each living unit. So if they're doing a fourplex, they would need four.
But they're two spaces per two or more bedroom units?
Vice Chair Fay, that, I included, just for context, the multifamily requirement. We're just looking at the bottom line that says middle housing.
Oh, just the blue. So if you've got a two- or three-bedroom auxiliary unit, I mean, it's kind of a little bit weird to imagine a three-bedroom, but you can still only require one parking space for that?
Correct.
And that's per the statute, because that is pretty much straight out of the statute, right?
That is correct.
Thank you, Legislature. Okay, that was my question.
Anyone else have any praise for the Legislature, like Vice Chair? Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Ashley. I'll then open up the public comment and peruse the crowd for any individual who may have omitted filling out a comment card that would like to speak on this item. Not seeing any, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the dais for any further discussion or praise or a motion.
Chairman Munt, I make a motion to approve item, we're in fourteen now, right? No, thirteen. Item thirteen, Z25-11, as written.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Vice Chair and a second from Commissioner Davis. Please cast your vote. Motion carries. Moving into, you guessed it, another LDC text amendment. Item number fourteen, Z2517, LDC text amendment, Administrative Review of Preliminary Plats. And Veronica.
Tonight, I will be presenting to you an LDC text amendment to allow administrative review of preliminary plats. As we know, this past legislative session, the governor signed into law House Bill 2447. Among other things, this bill does require that all cities and towns review and approve preliminary plats without a public hearing, and the effective date of this would be January first of 2026. The language of the bill was very, it was a very small change that made, but a pretty impactful one. This requirement used to be a "may," meaning it was at the discretion of the city or town. It is now "shall," so we are required to do this by statute. So the proposed text amendment that we have before you tonight will allow staff to administratively approve preliminary plats and accompanying open space plans. However, we did hear the concern of the Commission and some residents at our last hearing where we initiated and did the citizen review on this particular text amendment, where there was some concern about perhaps some transparency of this type of review. So what we are proposing to do here is for preliminary plats and open space plans of twenty acres or more, those will be presented to the Planning Commission as a study session item to get comment and feedback from the Planning Commission. At that point, it would still be an administrative approval by staff, but we are still bringing it forward in a public forum for any concerned citizens to hear the discussion and any feedback you might provide to staff. In addition to that, we did include an appeal process in there for these administrative approvals. If there is a person aggrieved, someone, a member of the Town Council, Town Manager, the Planning Manager, basically in compliance with our current process for appeals, anybody who fits those categories may request an appeal of that administrative approval. That appeal would then come before the Planning Commission through the typical appeal process, public noticing, public hearing, all of the good things that we have currently in our code for appeals. So with that, staff is recommending that the Commission recommend approval to the Town Council, approval of this proposed text amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Veronica, anyone have any questions or comments? Vice Chair?
I do. Two, actually. The first one, the appeals, that's the applicant, not a member of the public surrounding the property, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Fay, in our current rules, our current LDC on appeals, there's actually a list of potential appellants for something like this. One would be the property owner of the property that is to be subdivided. Another is a member of council, the Town Manager, the Planning Manager, and the last is a person aggrieved who has standing on the decision that is made. So there are a number of potential appellants for this decision.
Yeah, that, would that last category include neighbors?
The way the LDC words that, it says a person who is aggrieved and has standing.
Right.
So if we were, pardon me, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, if we were to receive an appeal request from an adjacent property owner, we as staff would need to review whether or not that particular individual has standing to make the appeal.
Right, but unfortunately, that's the question I'm asking, is would a neighbor have standing?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, excuse me, those questions are pretty fact-intensive, and the staff review that she's referring to would actually include the legal department. There has been, you know, we would review it in light of recent case law, so that is a question I think that kind of turns on the facts of the case, depending on the neighbor.
I don't think that's true. A neighbor, someone who's adjacent to the property, a neighbor, would they have standing or not? I don't see that that's, yeah, if you're, if we're debating whether someone who's half a mile away, do they, maybe, but would a neighbor, would someone who's adjacent to a property have standing to appeal, essentially saying, I disagree that you gave the applicant this, potentially?
Right, duly noted, sir. I don't know of a bright line rule, legal rule, sir, that states a neighbor has standing per se.
Exactly. I don't think there is one, and so that's actually my kind of beef that feeds one of the public. It's a comment a public member made, but I do agree with that this is just more of the undermining transparency and such. So that's my concern about the appeals piece. The other piece is, and it's, I think this is a criticism of the legislation, but this is a bad idea. It undermines transparency. It undermines council. It kind of takes us out of the buffer, the protective buffer that council has, well, it won't have anymore. This is just, I mean, I'm criticizing the legislation here, but I don't think there's, it's like, a little bit like arguing against gravity, but overall, this is from a local control, from protecting the political class, from a transparency with the public. This is all around a bad law, and I don't think we have a choice in the matter, but it's resoundingly, I don't know that there is anything other than potentially speed and efficiency for the applicant. I don't know that there is anything good about this law.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, if I may, thank you for the feedback. It's appreciated. We can make the assumption that the reasoning behind this is, as you had mentioned, for speed and efficiency for the developer. Also, as you may recall, last year, mid-part of 2024, there were some other changes made regarding plats where only certain plats would go before the Town Council. Otherwise, they're all reviewed by our Development Engineering Manager, which also have the same appeal process on it. So it appears as though, you know, there's been a trajectory towards this type of thing.
Yeah, I think the development community is the ones writing these laws, the Legislature, and this is not a criticism of you. We don't have a choice. We have to adapt our code to what the ARS says. We're not a sovereign entity. We're a- We're a political subdivision. It is what it is. And I was, I raised more or less the same opposition to the same transparency and harm for the political subdivision last time, too. So not a criticism of you, we have to do it, and I'm just venting.
Thank you, understood.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments or questions or criticisms therein? Okay, I'll then open up the public comment. I do not have any comment cards. Once again, I will scan the immense vast crowd to see if any of the many individuals still with us were here to speak on this item. Not seeing any, I will close the public comment and bring it right back here to the dais for additional discussion or a motion.
I'd be willing to make a motion to approve item fourteen, Z-2517, LDC text amendment for administrative review of preliminary plaques.
We have a motion from Commissioner Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second from Commissioner Anderson. All right, please cast your votes. Motion carries, six-one. All right, that takes us to the end, because of course, as you all may remember, we already did item fifteen. Into the administrative items, these are for the Commission's discussion and action. It is of the discretion of the majority of the Commission regarding public input and requests of any administrative items. And, okay, item sixteen, the 2026 Planning Commission meetings. We need to consider the approval of the calendar for next year's meetings. Likely subject to change, of course, but has everybody reviewed those and checked your calendars to be sure that you will be available forthright? I spent many hours looking at that, so, all right. Well, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
Chairman Munt, I would move to approve item sixteen, which I did not review or look at at all, as it is written.
We have a motion from an aloof Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
I'll make a second. I also did not review it. Thank you.
Commissioner Gage with the second. All right, please cast your vote, whether or not you actually reviewed said meeting We have a pass. Item number seventeen, Planning Commission minutes, to consider the approval of the minutes from the study session and regular meeting from back in October, the first year of our Lord, 2025. Does anyone have any amendments to those minutes? Then I would entertain a motion.
I do not have any amendments, but I, sometimes I go on tirades and get a little bit aggressive. I'd like to thank whoever writes them for sanitizing and making me look much nicer than I think I am in person, so would you please pass along my gratitude?
That is an infinitely difficult job, sir. I don't do it, of course, but...
That said, Chairman Munt, I move to approve item seventeen, as they are written.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner DeGravina on the end. Please cast your vote. And the motion carries. Minutes approved. Communications time. No executive session, so we will come right back to all of us for a report from Chairman and members of the Commission on current events. Does anyone have anything of note they would like to discuss? Commissioner DeGravina?
This Saturday at the Island's Community Park, which is just south and east of McQueen and Warner, is the Island's Car Show. It's kind of fun to walk through. It's free, so we have it annually.
Very nice. Anything else? All right, I don't have much, other than I just am missing a Little League game tonight, so hopefully the Mighty Muscles are pulling out a big win. We've got playoffs coming soon. That's a big deal for anyone who's got, you know, kids of the, in my case, the eight-to-ten age. Little League is, it's a lot of fun, so go Muscles. Okay, then we'll go to item number nineteen and back to Ashley for the report from the Planning Services Manager on current events.
No updates from me either.
Okay, well, because you've all hit everything so boring, other than Vice Chair's tirades, we will move right along into adjournment or a motion thereof.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gage on the adjournment of this meeting, and we have a second from the Vice Chairman. Please cast your votes. I didn't even have to say stop the count, and it went through. Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.